Carolyn, until she gets here, she'll be here. Norton Cable is recording. If anybody else is, just have to let us know. We'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, so minutes of the October 3 meeting. If you guys have a chance to look at them. Any questions, comments on the minutes? All right, is there a motion to approve the minutes for October 3? Second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, the warrants, yes, that's me. I've reviewed and approved the following warrants for October 3, 2019, $187,886.50. I wish to enter that into public record. Student rep update. So I'm going a little fast because I was told we have to be out by 7:30, so.
Yes, we have, just for information, Madam Chair, just, we have the alarm systems in this building, per state review going off. We don't schedule it. So we're just told about it, and we were told today about it, so.
Can I suggest if we have to be out here by 7:30, we should...
We can table some, any items that we need till Monday night.
So should we do a quick go-through of what's on the agenda and decide what to table till Monday night?
You could do that, of course. I would recommend district goals, superintendent's evaluation, town meeting priorities, because we can discuss it then. And the financial update. Those can all be done Monday night.
So 10 to 13?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if we get done earlier, then we can just add to the...
We'll do other business on tail. You have other business, save it.
Yeah.
I just, once the alarm starts going off, it's just gonna go on and on and on and off, and we should have that every Thursday.
I know, right? So Cooper, you're up.
Awesome, all right. Well, at that note, I'll speed through these. So at the high school, we have the coffee house, the second one of this year, out this Friday. Those are always a lot of fun, so looking forward to that. Everyone has safely returned from the delegation trip to China, and it was really cool to hear about that. I see all pictures on Twitter. Really cool to hear about that. And the girls volleyball had a senior night last night, and all the, all teams, freshmen, JV, and varsity, beat Dedham. The powder puff game is coming up soon. That's always a lot of fun to watch. There is a college career planning night and financial aid seminar for juniors on the 22nd. And eighth grade open house is on the 30th. Sophomores and a few juniors took the PSATs yesterday. There is a STEM week next week at the high school. It's brought by the Women's STEM Club, and they're collaborating with a Yale classroom to perform a DNA activity using strawberries. Also, the Deaf Kids Code organization is coming for a day-long experience, and they're gonna be collaborating with the REEF program at the high school to learn about robot circuits and apps. For some upcoming field trips, there's the math trip to the family park to delve into statistics. And also business department trips to Steel Art Norwood and Amazon Fop, and the Amazon offices in Fall River. On November 5th, former NHL All-Star Kevin Stevens will be speaking at Norton High School about his battle with addiction, thanks to the Norton opioid prevention education and chief clerk. And the honor societies have all accepted applications, and new members are being selected for the tabbing day on November 1st, as well as the induction ceremonies on November 26th. That's the high school. Okay. Moving on. At the middle school, Dr. Seer and summer students from Stonehill College came and visited a sixth-grade classroom today, and they helped with the neurobiology. So that's really cool. And also, the, excuse me, the girls soccer team is undefeated, and the boys' team is also having a great season. And the first school dance of the year is next Friday on the 25th. At the Yell, I won't say too much, as I know that's the whole deal tonight, even though we aren't at the Yell, which I was surprised to learn about a few minutes ago. But yeah, at the Yell, they're having a Hoop for Heart, Kids Heart Challenge, which started this past week in their health classes and physical education classes with Ms. Crane. They're hoping to raise $1,500 for this cause, the American Heart Association. And the challenge will end with a Students Against Faculty basketball game on Friday, October 25th. And my money's on the students. At the JCS, the second grade held the family fun night on the 10th. And on the 10th as well, they had visitors from Kazakhstan as well to learn about the US schools and teacher evaluation system. Then the LGM, they had the fun run last week, and they surpassed their goal of $15,000. So that's great to hear. Whew!
All right, so do I have to turn it back over?
Yes.
Okay, so our Chair Carolyn Gallagher is here, so now I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Sherri. Thanks, Cooper, for another great update. So, Mr. Gagin, we'll move on to the opening school report for the Yell school.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Thank you for having me. Am I loud enough for you? Okay. So I think you might have heard a little bit about our opening at the Yell with our building. But the thing I wanted to just make sure I talked about tonight was that everything has just been incredibly smooth opening for the kids. And faculty, staff have been amazing in just kind of helping and supporting and being flexible. I mean, when you have the superintendent sharing his office with the business manager and who was prior with the head of, head of maintenance, it just really is amazing to see what we're doing and how we're able to do it and how to make it work. But I thought, what an opening it was, and I thought a window would be perfect to show how we were doing. But we did try, we did start to make it kind of interesting. Dr. Bieta did ask us to go outside the box in our, in opening school this year, making it interesting for the kids. And it really has been something that we took to heart and were able to do. As I said, all faculty and staff have been incredibly flexible in making this work. When you try to prepare for elementary school, it's big about like the classroom setup, the bulletin boards, getting everything ready. And for the teachers to be able to bounce with everything that has occurred, it really is amazing. We've been able to model positivity and be able to kind of take on everything that was kind of an issue and just make it a challenge and try to achieve as best as possible. We've had people move classrooms two or three times, just as we've been able to open up new spaces and make it work. So it really has been amazing. And the whole time, everything has been, I mean, we put our money where our mouth is and really have made students first. And as I said, when all of a sudden people are sharing offices, when all central office is down and the PPS office in closets and little storage offices and rooms, it really does show that we care about what the kids have for themselves and how it's supposed to be. And I kept stressing the whole time to the faculty and staff that we are more than a building, more than just the brick and mortar that are around us. It really is about the kids, for the kids, and with the kids. And that's what we've really shown in these first few weeks. And I just kind of had some pictures up there that have explained it, that we, as a fourth grader, they didn't know the difference of what was going on, whether fifth grade is, there's some fifth grade classrooms down the hall or in the same hallway with them. They didn't know the difference, and they've been working with it. Fifth grade, I think, was a little bit sad that they didn't get a chance to go up to the second floor and to the third floor yet. But they've been bouncing with it, and they've been able to share bathrooms, share hallways, be a little bit cramped in the cafeteria. And it really has been something that they have been able to kind of work with and be with, and it hasn't dampened their spirits whatsoever. The other day, a fifth grade student, or excuse me, a fourth grade student came off the bus, and he looked kind of sad. And I turned to him, I'm like, "What's wrong? What's going on? Did something happen on the bus?" And he's like, "I'm just so sad that fourth grade doesn't get new windows." I'm like, "No, no, no, you're getting new windows." And he was like, "Oh, okay." And then he walked right in, and he was fine. So I think that kind of speaks to where they are, what they're doing. And for us, it's really been kind of just, our goals for the year have been continuing our PBIS, and it's something that we're doing, and it's something that we are modeling for the kids in that positive behavior. And it's something that we're working on. It's, I've taken so many pictures and been able to kind of tweet them out. I just love when you see the teachers as the guide at the side, and it's really something that you can see in every single classroom. We were able to do our kindness challenge early in the year, and it's something that took off. And it's something that we just put in the kids' hands, and they control it, and they do it, and it's really been awesome to see. Also, on that previous slide, our PTO, which I know is here tonight, support us as they always do, helping out the teachers, wanting to kind of move things up, that they give little like bonuses for our teachers to spend throughout the year. And we're moving it up for them to kind of do it this year. And they're thinking about it, and they want an appreciation day for kids. And those are the types of things that come through with our community. And more pictures of like guiding at the side, which I love. And then to the left, another kind of bonus that has happened is you have fourth and fifth grades so kind of close to one another is it's enabled teachers to work together more and have them kind of work together on projects between the fourth and fifth grade. And sometimes when you go from fourth grade, those two main hallways, all the way up the stairs to the fifth grade, it seems like not that great of a distance, but when you're all of a sudden next door to one another, it enables that kind of working together to happen. And it really has been about the learning, and everything has been going on throughout all this. And even though I kind of said, when Dr. Bieta first said, "Listen, we're gonna have this issue. We can start later. We can do all these different things." So it doesn't matter what the classroom looks like, whether it was an office or a conference room. We can make it work, and we can do, as the fugitive Tommy Lee Jones, we can find whatever classroom, outhouse, doghouse, birdhouse. We can, we can make it work and make it, make it work for what we're trying to do. And so, that's it. I've cut the other 150 slides if we're trying to make it quick here. It has been, it's been, it's been an experience. I told the kids and the parents the first night at open house that we try to make it a memorable school year every single year. This is going to be one that's going to be memorable for them, that they're going to remember that they were the year that the asbestos happened and they were all forced into one half of the building. And, but they made it work, and they continue to just amaze me each day.
Just wanted to add that, I mean, thanks to Marty for just keeping it here at all times, I think. It's one of the things that, you know, Marty doesn't get too high, doesn't get too low, just keeps it here, and that sends a nice message. The staff, the veteran staff that have stepped up and just tried to keep it, I think they're just being positive, just understanding, teaching them, as I said in one of my letters home earlier this year, our competencies around, you know, being respectful and accountability and dealing with change, even though it's a difficult, it's not the perfect world. As of today, we are asbestos clean at the Yell school, plus two areas that have been fully encapsulated and would be almost impossible to get to, because it's like not only wrapped, but then it's got like a pipe around it, then it's got a wall around it. It's, so now the plan is to finish the ceilings, finish the windows clean. We're gonna ask the staff in the next couple of days, maybe tomorrow, to go up there for themselves and see it, so they can see how much down to the bone it really is. And get us back into the classroom hopefully in the next couple of weeks.
Nice.
So, thank you.
So, Mr. Gagin, I wanted to pass along a message from Kathleen, who is not here. But she wanted me to share sort of publicly that somebody approached her while she was getting gas. It was a parent who wanted her to know how supported she felt by a conversation she had with you in regards to her child. So those are the stories that we love to hear, and I think, as we've talked about for a long time, we're really striving towards a more sort of SEL district, right? Really thinking of the whole child, thinking of sort of including not just academics, but really that social, emotional piece as well. And I think parents are a big part of that, too. So what you shared about kind of positive behavior and kindness, I think certainly comes from the top. So thank you for being such a nice role model for us in the district, for your staff, for the children in your school. But Kathleen, just wanted to make sure that that was sort of a message back to you. So thank you. Thank you for getting us through. I was lucky enough to visit the Yell when this first happened and to do a tour. So I know that children are in the cafeteria for a classroom and in some sort of very unusual spaces. And although you said you would make it work, I just want to also say publicly that we can make it work for the short term, right? But that isn't what we want for our ideal learning environment. So it's working for the short term, and it's kind of a nice adventure, but we want to get those children back into their classrooms, so.
Though I think we're gonna need a crowbar to get that teacher out of that hat. She loves that space.
It's a big space, that is for sure, so, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallagher, we just wanted to skip down to six through nine, so that we can get the students' items, and then we'll come back to the parent ports, which is a major part of tonight's meeting.
So we will move to vote to approve DECA trips for 2019-20 school year. Mrs. Albritton, and she brought some students.
Uh, this is Al. She is our president of our DECA program, and she's gonna talk about the different events that we have scheduled for this year.
Yeah, so like you said, my name's Allison Janine. I've been here a couple of times now. I'm a senior, and I am the DECA president, so we have some really exciting stuff. First up, on October 22nd, we have the Fall State Leadership Conference, which is just a one-day trip where you go, you work on leadership. There is a mock role play, so practice for our upcoming competitions. And there's also an etiquette lunch, which we found very exciting last year, so we learned how to be professional. Super exciting, open to all members, so we do have some younger members, which is super exciting as well. And then after that, November 15th to 17th, we have the DECA Power Trip, which is something we haven't done in a couple of years. But it's a two, no, sorry, three-night trip in Washington DC, and it's only for officers, with the exception of Max Kane, who will also be joining us. So it's a, an extended version of the Fall State Conference, sort of. It's leadership-based, working on character development, and preparing our officer team for a great year in Norton DECA. So very exciting and very fun trip for us as well, kind of a celebration of being on our officer team.
Jennifer Skoronic, she will be the chaperone for that trip.
Yeah, and we love Ms. Skoronic. We're gonna learn a whole lot. It's gonna be so fun. And then after that, January 9th and 10th, we have our annual DECA Districts Conference. So that's our first competition of the year, and we are planning to do very well this year. We have a whole lot of new members. Membership forms are not due for another week, and we already have 75 membership forms in, which is very exciting. We have a lot of interest this year, so that's gonna be a good one.
I was gonna, oh, just talking. If anybody's interested in being a judge for that particular conference, that's, oh, we always struggle every year because we have about 10 schools that attend with a lot of students, and having judges is very difficult. So if anybody would be able to donate their time, we would love to have you. You could just let me know.
Yeah.
Or you could call a school.
Yeah, and so that's a one-night trip, so you compete on the first day, awards on the second day. And then after that, qualifying members, so the people that place at the district conference will move on to the state conference, which is in late February, the 27th to 29th. So that's a more elite competition, and hopefully we'll send a whole bunch of members. And then after that, fingers crossed, we'll be going to Tennessee this year for the International Career Development Conference, which is gonna take place in late April into early May. It's a four-night trip, and we are planning to go at least for a couple of members. We have some big winners coming up this year, so, yeah, very exciting.
So, as per statute, you have to vote, phone the out-of-state ones. So recommendation is to approve the Washington DC DECA Power Trip and the DECA International Career Development Conference in Nashville.
Do we vote them separately or together?
No, you can vote them as well. You can vote that you're supporting the DECA trip to DC and Nashville as provided to the students.
Can we do a so moved?
Yeah, you can do a so moved, and then you still need a second.
Second, all in favor? We're so happy to support DECA, so keep up the good work and positive thinking. Good for you.
Good luck this year.
Good luck. Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So we will vote to approve Music Department Trip to New York City. Mrs. Brown.
Hi.
Hi. So this, this is the fifth year we have requested to go on this trip. It's a day trip. We go to Broadway, and this year we are looking to see West Side Story. We're hoping to have about 50 students go. We've also opened it up to the Drama Club for the first time, because we really want to fill that bus. Last year, we only had 37 students, so hopefully the Drama Club can get us up to 50. And we leave at like 5:15 in the morning and usually get back about 10:30. We spend a little bit of time in Times Square. We have lunch, then we go to the show, then after the show, we come home and stop along the way to supper.
Recommendation is to support the Music Department's trip to New York City.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Happy surprise. We love this.
Half firearms every Thursday.
Global Education Update, and vote to approve the 2021 and 2022 tours. So it says, Mrs. O'Neil, Mrs. Tinnelli, and Dr. Kiefer.
Well, I certainly don't need to present with this huge crowd here tonight of students that have traveled and are members of our global education program at the high school and two of our fantastic advisors. So I will turn it over to Ms. Tinnelli and Dr. Kiefer, and we have some students that want to share with you as well.
So come join us. Come on, everybody.
There's some chairs right behind you, too, if you want them.
We have a few students that wanted to share their experience in Italy over last April vacation with us.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
We went to Italy.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes.
Yes, I'm Kayla, and I'm a junior.
I'm Kayla, I'm a junior.
I'm Jocelyn, I'm a junior.
I'm Lea, I'm a junior.
I'm Brianna, and I'm a senior.
Okay, so overall, I think that we can all say that like it impacted us by like, it opened our eyes to somewhere we've never been before and just kind of like, it was opportunity that we might not have ever been able to have without it being present at the high school. We gained independence, and we were able to learn about other cultures and languages.
Yes, we love independence and responsibility, like having by ourselves with our parents. So definitely made us more mature.
Yeah, I agree with that. That was my first trip like ever, like I'm playing. Very like eye-opening.
Yeah, and I definitely think like, if we should talk to people that you would never talk to before, like April of last year, before we went on the trip, me and Kayla, we sat across from each other in TV video. We didn't talk a word to each other.
Not once.
Not once. She's someone that I would never talk to before, and now I consider her one of my closest friends. And I think it really allows you to form friendships and bonds that'll last forever.
That's great.
Get some pictures from you.
Can I touch it?
Yeah.
Just a few quick pictures they put together.
Let's ask with Mr. Demars. Chaperone. That was our whole group.
O'Neil, you made it.
Shocking, with some O'Neil pictures.
Yeah, are these your pictures?
Yeah.
I thought everybody else would put their pictures on, but I guess mine stood the bat.
So for the next two trips, I guess for the more cultural experience, in 2021, we're looking to do a STEM tour in Panama to research into water conservation, waterway conservation. I thought it would be interesting to have a themed trip, and I know some of the science teachers were really interested in going, so I figured why not give them a shot to be a chaperone of a STEM trip. And it's one of their, it's one of, we have some newer tours, but they also have an office in Panama. So when speaking with our consultant, she felt like this is one of the most hands-on science tours that they have because they have more connections with them having an office in Panama. So I figured I wanted to give our students the best opportunity to do as much in the field research as well as cultural experience. And then in 2022, we're looking to go to Australia and New Zealand, which has been something that students have been trying to get us to do since we started the club. So sorry. But students have been talking about Australia since we started the club, so we figured that it would be a big sell and also a great opportunity to get out of maybe the European type of tours that we've done during the past couple of years.
And you all have the full itinerary as well.
And as far as service, we're hoping to do Thailand in 2021 and Dominican Republic to return to the original service trip in 2022. We thought that maybe having the Dominican in Panama in the same year might just cause a little bit of sort of friction because they're similar parts of the world, so we wanted to kind of separate those a little bit. The service portion of the Thailand trip is an elephant sanctuary. We felt like that would be a pretty easy sell with the student body, even the ones that can't come. This is Nora and Sam there. They're seniors now. They went on the Dominican trip as sophomores, and they're returning to the Peru trip. In the spring, we have 19 students headed to Peru, and I think we have five repeat customers.
Five, yeah, I think there's a good group of us.
Says a lot, too. Do you guys want to talk about service?
I mean, personally for me, I've never been to like a foreign country. I think I've only ever traveled like to Florida, and then like, when I heard about the Dominican, I was like, oh my gosh, like wow. Like I take French, like this is gonna be great. And then, talking to Dr. Kiefer about it, like I didn't know him, like I knew of him, I knew he was a doctor. And I kind of just walked into his office one day and was like, so this Dominican trip? And from then on, it was kind of like, this is where we're going. And I think I kind of took, I think every single one of us took something different with it. Like Sam and I kind of had a similar experience because we're similar. But I got like the impact that it had on me, like I'm gonna start getting emotional because I just, like the connections we formed with the girls at the school was just like some of the most like pure, like most beautiful connections you could ever form with someone. And it's just that kind of like pure, like total acceptance that they gave us.
Yeah, I agree with everything she just said. It's really an amazing experience because you're not only impacting yourself, you're impacting other people, and especially for it to be young girls, it's very like powerful.
Powerful, and like we did a lot with like, kind of not like promoting, but kind of just like letting them know like, this is what we do, and like this is what we don't do, because you have like this beautiful brain that allows you to go on to like other schools. And I think some of the girls, like older girls, like were going to like Switzerland for like college, and like they were like, oh, I wish I could do that. And then I'd be like, why can't you? They'd be like, oh, because I don't have enough money. I'm like, but you have this. Like, it's just those kind of like personal connections that like, not only were we empowering them, they were empowering us back without even knowing it.
I also went on the Spain and Portugal trip, which was the very first trip that we did with EF. And then I think it was very different from the service trip, but overall, I think both of them were very powerful to not only me, but everyone.
I think Dr. Kiefer can also speak on the memories that we made when our bungalows being right next to each other and having him run in with pots and pans to kill a spider that he didn't end up killing, that he didn't end up killing much to my dismay. I just think it's so funny because I've never had Dr. Kiefer as a teacher, and I had Miss Im as a teacher who also was our other chaperone. And like, we always said like throughout the week that we were there, like they were our parents. Like they were there, like Miss Im did surgery on us a couple of times, like when we had like cuts and bruises. She was our mom, and like Dr. Kiefer like was just always there and being like, let's have like these life talks. Like we were playing dominoes one night, and then he'd be like, so Nora, tell me. And I'm just like, oh my god, like I'm in a therapy session. But it's like, it's so funny because now Dr. Kiefer is writing my letter of recommendation for college, and yeah, both of ours. And it's like, we never even had him as one of our teachers, but like, I think Sam and I can both say that like that trip allowed us to like become closer, not only as like teacher and student, as friends.
I think you're doing the same thing. We're both writing our college essays on this trip.
Oh, yeah, we are. Yeah, I made Miss Fay cry. I mean, that is the goal, that is the goal. It's like we're more like now like friends than we are like... It's like we're more like now like friends than we are like colleagues, I guess you could say. Because we are graduating.
So the recommend, first of all, thank you for being exemplary students. And really being some of the first to go on these trips because as you remember, we hadn't done it for over a decade, you know, it's been an issue and we put it together and application and all that. So thank you for being great leaders and showing the way for the school committee to recognize that this is something that's worthwhile for students and more to consider. So we have a recommendation for the four as noted, and the central office is recommending you consider voting positively to support these four trips.
Separately or together?
You can put them together.
And Joe and I already know which ones we want to go on. I want to go on. I think before we vote, I just want to say, it really is, you know, we sit here and we vote on these things, and it's always nice when you guys come back and tell us about your experience because sometimes, you know, we vote on it and say, oh, have a great trip. But to hear, you know, how this affects you guys is really pretty powerful for us to sit here and listen to. And I think that, you know, you guys are, you're still young. And so for you guys to experience going outside of our country and do things like this is amazing. And your parents, because I, you know, I have a sophomore now and I can't imagine letting my kid go on a plane by himself. I mean, so it's, it's, it's great to hear the feedback.
And it's cultural too, because as you know, I just came back from a professional trip. And, and you know, we're hosting, we're gonna be hosting somewhere between 15 and 20, fourth, fifth, sixth and seventh creatives in the winter, where you have a culture that just sends them with five adults to live in another people's homes for two weeks. And, you know, it's just different for us. But it's great to know that our kids are interested in doing this. As you can see, they are 19, going to Peru in the spring is a good number.
I mean, do we have for?
Probably 15 for Paris and Barcelona. We have a couple repeats as well.
So and this is fully funded by families.
One quick question, are the, are the trips like concurrent? Like are they both on April vacation or is one in the summer?
No, they're both gonna be on school vacations, but different school vacations. So it'll be February and April of both years.
So if a student chose to do both and their parents bankrolled it?
Yeah. We invite them to come on?
She's not volunteering, I'm just saying, if there's interest, I just wanted to clarify that for people.
We also look at rainy seasons to try to avoid for the countries that are affected by rainy seasons to try to stagger it.
That's what happened when I went at 16 to Scotland, it rained. It was cold, wet rain every day.
Yeah, we were there after like the rainy season. I remember that now, I just remember it, because like they had like their beds. We took like tour throughout the town just like to see and like walk through the community. And like their beds and like in some houses were like raised on cinder blocks. And like it was just such a culture shock. I remember crying and Dr. Kiefer being like, oh my God. Like I'm just sitting there crying because like it's just such a cultural, cultural shock. And it like just, I know like when we say like it was amazing and everything, but like it really brought me back to my reality being like, wow, I'm fortunate enough to drive a car. I'm fortunate enough to like have a chance to go to college. I'm fortunate enough to like have a school that allows this. It's a great lesson. It is.
So for the two trips into the Pacific, they're yet to miss school, is that right?
It overlaps, I think they're 10 days, they're 12 days.
I know ours overlaps the two days back of April vacation.
Most of the trips, February.
Don't get me wrong, I have.
No, no, they do almost every trip that's gonna go that far is gonna overlap, but between one and three days.
Okay, so this was four days, right? It's 12.
Oh, because you find, you have, you have the flights.
Right. Again, I'm fine with it, I'm just curious.
So we typically try to leave like on a Thursday, so you admit like a Thursday, Friday, and maybe like the following Monday or somewhere around there, just to.
And students are responsible for all their work that they missed.
It's an excuse.
And I, I mean, I think it's just very nice that Norton has demonstrated that the children in Norton really such a desire to learn and such kindness. And I think that that's really what we're trying to promote, that there hasn't been a problem. Of course, when you came to us a few years ago, you know, everybody kind of wonders how will our students react, and they've been nothing but positive and wonderful role models for everybody. So we're really lucky in our town.
And I think the advisors drew a really nice shot, the two that are here tonight, and then Ms. Burkett and Mrs. Mahoney that are also advisors as well. They really put a lot of thought into the application process, and students take that seriously. And we tell students that we have, we have expectations in our behavior. When you're traveling. And they meet the expectation. And we also have an application process for chaperones, and the people who are interested in traveling take that piece seriously as well, so.
Well, thank you for everything you do. So I think we have to vote to approve the global education trips for 2021 and 2022. So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Great, well, have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. So for me. So to the parent.
I'm sorry?
Are we into the bullying?
Yes.
Because I have a decent amount of them actually.
Okay.
So do we want?
You can bring them all up. You can do them right now if you want, that's fine.
Well, if you want to, because parents can.
Well, we're under, we're under a mandate by the Commonwealth to get this fully voted. So I'm happy to, we can go through it and then it's gotta be a long discussion.
I'm now being told that we have an updated one.
Yes.
You know, we got, so why don't we have them present? And I'm gonna kind of skim through this real quick and make sure that what I'm looking at is still in the U.
Okay, thanks.
So to our parent organizations, thank you for coming. So we will invite you by school?
Total together, they can come up.
All together, so come join us. I think that.
She is behind you too.
A conversation happened historic, or sort of previously, every school parent organization had sort of a liaison from the school committee. And what we discovered is that we were really challenged by the amount of meetings that we went to, finance committee, board of selectmen, of course, our meetings and others. So we were hoping to receive updates. We would love to, and Kathleen, who is our chairperson, is not here this evening, and she apologizes for not being able to be here. She will sort of be our liaison in regards to coming to meetings. So she did ask if we could get a schedule of when your meetings are, and she'll try to go to at least sort of one every so often so that she visits every school. So if you could get that to us, but please introduce yourselves. Thank you for coming.
I'm Danielle Boulay. I am with the JCS Solomonis Parent Organization. I've been on the board for a couple of years. And we're working on, currently we have a request for funding some rugs for the schools to replace for the teachers. That's one of the things that's come up so far this year. We do lots of activities throughout the year, for some for the community, some as well for the staff. We do appreciations. We have a boost for fundraiser, which is our biggest fundraiser. We just had a fall festival and well, that's pretty much some of the things we do.
Thanks, Danielle.
Linda Whiteside, I am the treasurer of the high school parent board. I've pretty much been the treasurer on every parent board at all the schools as my kids have kind of come up. But the school year's off to a good start. We have, right now, our first and only fundraiser for the year is underway. It's just a direct donation. We sent out letters to all the parents and donations are coming in, which is great. We just put out a request to teachers for anything that they needed, and we approved last night in our meeting, $750 worth of fund request for the teachers and the school nurse. And there was a college fair a week or so ago at the high school, and we sponsored the breakfast for all the reps that came into the college. And then the one big thing that happens at the school is, of course, the grad night for all the seniors when they graduate. And that's already in the works, even though graduation is a little ways off, but it's, it's a huge party and it's a lot of work, so. That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, I'm Jill Goldstein, and I'm one of the co-chairs at the Yell for the PTO there. And what we're working on right now, as Mr. Gagen had said, is getting some of the teacher stipends that we usually do in the spring. We're going to kind of push them up and do them, I think, within the next month just to give the teachers some extra funds to, you know, purchase what they need for the classrooms and what they've lost because of the asbestos. Another thing, recently we had to cancel our trunk retreat event. Basically, it came down to lack of, you know, parental volunteers. We didn't have really anyone other than the board that was willing to kind of step up, which is kind of sad. But we are moving on and we are thinking of other things to do during the year. We have some family fun events, going to Altitude and Attleboro and Province Bruins Games. And right now, we're also trying to start looking into the fifth grade yearbook and maybe organize a yearbook club that the fifth graders can be a part of instead of scrambling at the end of the year for pictures and stuff starting now and let the fifth graders, you know, experience that kind of club and, you know, get the pictures and they make more friends and have a good time. And that's about it right now.
Thank you.
I'm Sky Lawler. I am the president of the LG Norris Parent Teacher Connection. As Mr. Smith had said earlier, we just finished our fun one last Friday. We raised, well, our goal was $15,000. So Mrs. Luke, our principal, and Mr. Joe, our new custodian, dressed up as Jack Skellington and Sally from Nightmare Before Christmas and surprised the kids at pickup and drop off and lunch. Kids loved it. We also promised them if they reach over $20,000, we'd have another surprise for them. Don't want to ruin it. But we're gonna hopefully do that in the next couple of weeks, weather permitting. Look on Facebook and Twitter and you'll see. We also have a few other family fun nights, community events coming up. We have November 15th, we have Altitude. We have a holiday shop from December 2nd to December 6th. Breakfast with Santa on the 7th of December, a movie night on the 1st of January, Winter Carnival. Sounds early, but it's still actually the same weekend, but it's a leap year. So it's February 29th, which we hope that we'll still have on that day and not have a snow day or hurricane like we have the last couple of years. And then we were actually, with the money that we raised last year, we were able to purchase and complete our rug program for the meeting rugs for the classrooms. We were able to purchase the last 10 of the 13. We also purchased 10, sorry, 10 commercial tables for the schools. We were able to throw out the ones that were, I think, like 20 years old. So we have brand new tables for them. We've also been able to approve the third grade field trip to Plymouth Plantation, which happens tomorrow, and a first grade field trip to Open Roll Sanctuary at East Attleboro. And we've also filed our taxes, we did a file of 1C3. We were able to file our taxes already, so we're really excited that that's done. It's pretty much it.
Thank you very much. And Melanie, come over.
I'm huge, you know.
Melanie, that was perfect.
Making a grand entrance.
My apologies, our girls' school parent meeting is actually downstairs right now. So I literally ran, I can't breathe.
Do you want to take a break? We were just asking for a quick little update and sort of how things are going. And if you want a break?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Fantastic, okay. So the short answer is, we're just getting started. We're issuing our fundraiser showing tomorrow. And basically, it's pretty straightforward. We're asking parents to give a donation so that we can give, sorry, I can't breathe. Grant opportunities to teachers, scholarships, donations for kids for field trips, et cetera. And then really just bring enrichment opportunities into the school. That's kind of our big focus that we like to do. Fundraisers a little outside the box this year. We ask teachers things they'd be willing to do if their kids hit certain limits. So we're not having a fundraiser, we're having a fundraiser. That's probably the most exciting thing we've got going on right now, other than we're just approving various enrichment opportunities coming into school. Any other questions?
No, that's, so I mean, I think that I can probably speak on behalf of being an involved parent. So standing where you are right now for many years as the chairperson at JCS and then for a short time here at the middle school and at the Yell. So thank you, because I know how hard you work. There's so much that happens behind the scenes that nobody really understands. Even writing emails and creating sort of updates and posting on Facebook and doing all of your nonprofit things really takes a lot of time and energy, so thank you. And I did see on Twitter or Facebook, I'm not sure which one, that you had to cancel the trunk retreat, which has always been a really sort of successful, fun, amazing event. So I think that we are all so busy and I think it's just hard for everybody to always step up. But if we are out there, have parents listening, it's so important to just be part of your school community and to really offer your children the opportunity for all of those enrichment opportunities. So I hope that, you know, people watching will come out and volunteer, but thank you. Thanks a lot, we really appreciate it. I think Kathleen was just really hoping that although you may not see us regularly at your meetings, and I always, while I've sat on this board, was the liaison to the middle school and could never get to your meetings because they were always downstairs while I was upstairs. So I never was able to participate, but of course, we are available by email and certainly would be more than happy to continue to support our schools. So let us know. I don't know if anybody else has any comments?
No, just thank you guys.
And I know a lot of parents donate their money, which is great, and we use it, but it also takes a lot to spend the time to use that money, I guess. And some of the things are not like things you do during the day, like at the school. You can do it from your own home, so just something to think about.
Well, and I know JCS is probably getting ready for their float. I don't know if the LG is also marching in the parade this year as well, but those are huge undertakings that really are so much fun just to get to know people, get to know sort of your school community, so. And I'm still, I see it, I don't have children in the lower schools anymore, but I still am part of your sort of social media, so I get all of these updates and it's sort of a little nostalgic, so great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
We really appreciate you coming out tonight.
Thank you.
So we will move to vote to approve updates to the NPS Bullying Prevention and Intervention.
So we're required to look at our Bullying Prevention and Intervention Plan every two years. And we did that this summer. And basically what we did was we compared our plan to the model plan put out by the state. So we removed some language that was really, really directions for us that should never have been there in the first place. So we cleaned that up a little bit and then just made a few updates that I can share with you. I'll share the highlights of them anyways. So the front page, obviously, we updated all the people. On page seven, we updated section A to include PBIS training that we've done for staff on trauma-sensitive schools, work of the counselors, really reflecting what we're, we're doing now. On page 14, again, we updated to reflect what we're doing now. And we had something in there about a Saturday Scale Development Camp that we never did, so I'm not sure how we had that in the first place. Down at the bottom of that page, section F, we added in a process for investigating accusations of bullying from school staff to students that was missing in our previous plan. On page 17, we added in the process for problem resolution through the Department of Education. And that, again, should have been there and was missing from our previous plan. And we also made some minor updates to the language and some of the definitions. And then we also, people over time have updated our forms to make them a little bit more user-friendly for us as a staff. And so we updated the forms that are here for each process of between reporting and investigating and all of that. forms that are here for each process of between reporting and investigating and all of that. And then we also went through our list of therapeutic resources and called or verified that they were still in existence and that they were still practicing. So that's completely up to date as well. So those were the minor things. I see all your sticky notes under there.
Jean's bracing herself.
Can I, can I ask a, oh, second.
I thought it was only biting the ass, who cares?
No, no, no. My question isn't necessarily, I was just wondering, in any of this information, I mean, I've read it, and is there a definition of sort of what is perceived to be bullying? Sort of different than just being mean, right?
It's ongoing, persistent, happens more than once. It's actually, on the bottom of page 17, it talks about, so it's in the, it's at the, at the back are all of the definitions. And bullying is actually defined, not by Norton, but it's
Right.
defined by law. So it talks about repeated use by one or more students or members of school staff of written, verbal, or electronic expression or physical act. So it's, it's really about that repeated, ongoing, targeted behavior.
Okay. So that's like the important word that I think when we're sort of thinking about this, it's that word repeated, that it's different than sort of those one-time or two-time incidents.
And the process that we have as a staff to go through and determine if a situation is bullying or not is all in that packet as well. The forms, you can see the flow chart that the principals and the assistant principals follow when they go through the process to determine if an incident can be considered bullying. And it lays out all of those things. And it's somewhat
It's quite a flow chart.
It is a very aggressive flow chart.
It is a little aggressive. There's a lot of little
There's a lot of arrows.
Yeah, there's a lot of arrows.
You and I are very familiar with it at this point.
So it certainly isn't an easy process by any means.
It's also important to recognize that the determination is made by the principal, not the superintendent, and not the school committee, and it's non-appealable. It's the only law that doesn't allow for it to be appealed to the superintendent of schools. And it's also binding that it stays with the student until they graduate from the system if they're in fact, it's the only discipline report that follows you from school to school. So when you look at the process, really, it becomes that if they don't like that determination, they're going to DESI with it. So a parent can, and that's the section that was added here, about if the parents don't like the decision, they can then appeal. In most cases, what happens with schools like us and others is that someone will use comments like, or phrases like, "Well, I don't think that was bullying." Well, that's a process. You can't, you know, you may not, you may think that a student is not age-appropriate, but you still have to go through the process of the reporting and investigation, cross-examination, so on and so forth, before you can make that determination.
Now, do we have numbers on the amount of determinations we made?
Yeah, we have to file every single year. I don't have them with me, but I can share that with you if you'd like. We have to file all reports, and then were they or weren't they? Was there a finding or wasn't there a finding?
Now, sorry, I know Dennis is talking.
No, he just, he just, he just maybe noticed another, another thing missing here. Let's.
Thanks, Joe.
We are gonna run out of time, by the way.
Well, you gotta be, you gotta be careful about what's in front of you, because this is pretty much a boilerplate from the state, except for names and programs.
All right. Some of it's, some of it's typo, but, but some of it's legitimately questions.
And we can take the questions tonight and come back for the next meeting to take the final vote. That's not a problem.
All right. Dennis, you have the floor right now.
That's my train of thought, so. Your stickies mess with my vision.
So I'm just gonna go through these real quickly. On page five, first of all, while we're on page five, about three-quarters of the way down, we recognize that certain second line of that, there's a typo, perceived characteristic, should be two words, it's lumped into one. Up at the top of the page, or close to the top of the page, biannual updating, biannual or more frequently, seems like a lot to make. Twice a year or more is a lot of updating. Is that, is that state statute or whatever?
We, it's total boilerplate that we can be after.
And that seems crazy.
We, it is.
And I'm, and I'm as anti-bullying as you can get. But that, I don't see how we can legitimately keep up with that.
Well, I stood, our, Jean, correct me if I'm wrong, but when it comes to
I'm sorry, it's not, it's every two years. It's not twice a year.
It says biannually, though.
I wrote it.
On what page?
Every two years.
So top of
However, so that you're
So we should say biannually and not biannually.
Right, that's one. But two, be mindful that bullying reports are reported regularly.
No, that's fine. But this is saying that we have to review and update
The plan. And the plan does need to be
Yeah. What it says now is twice, twice a year or more. So it should be biannually, not biannually?
Yes.
All right. That's, that makes way more sense.
Yep.
On page 10, and while we're on page 10, I gotta tell you, a compliment, I went to one of the websites today just to see how, how easy is it to find the forms. It's actually super easy to find the forms online. So, so kudos to you guys.
There's also, just so that you know too, I appreciate you saying that, but there's also the let's talk.
Yeah, there's plenty of other ways. I'm just, I was just at work, I'm like, I'll try and see what it is. And it was like, click, click, and you're there. So.
So the forms are there, but this also needs to be there. So once it's voted onward.
Yeah, I was looking for the forms, because it's just, because it's set, you can find the forms online. Reporting by staff, my only issue with this was that it says, here's what you need to do, blah, blah, blah. But it doesn't say if you don't report it, if you're, if you're a staff member and you see something and don't report it, what happens? Staff must report it. If not, it's some, some type of disciplinary issue, what have you.
I don't believe it's, I don't wanna, yes, I'll get back to it. I have, I think I have the answer to that. But let me look into it.
So next page, page 11, this is more like kind of a flowy, thematic type of thing. The notice to parents or guardians, it comes in here before we actually have determined that it's bullying. And it does say, upon determining that bullying or retaliation has occurred, you're gonna notify people? I think you should move that to after the part where the bullying becomes determined. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't flow right.
You actually have to let the parent know prior to your investigation that a claim has been made
Okay, and that's not what it says.
With their child as a target or the, or the aggressor.
And that's not what this says. This says, upon determining that bullying or retaliation has occurred, and it actually goes on later, and it's to say, the determination of bullying has been made, so on and so. So, so then that, that's misstated.
Got it.
Yeah, cuz right at the end of that sentence, it says a target or aggressor. So you almost have to strike that first sentence.
Right.
Yeah. And Jean and I will double check the model language, I believe. We'll make it work.
All right. I'm gonna skip that one, actually. So the one thing that Joe made me think of, actually, is Joe, you said something about it's the principal that makes the determination. And that is true in most cases. But actually, there is, there is a case where I'm curious about that. Because one of the cases that they presented here is, what if it is actually you? And I'm not saying you would ever do it. But the superintendent is a staff member, and it does get mentioned in here is, this is a potential person who could be bullying.
Right.
So we don't address who actually determines in that case whether it's bullying or not. It's the principle of the building. But if it's, if it's front office administration, we don't have an actual methodology to, who does it then? Who's the?
You know what? I've never read it in a, in a bullying report, so I'd have to ask that question. We'd have to go to DESI with that, cuz I don't know what they call for protocol for a central office administrator being accused of bullying.
Okay.
No, it's a great question. I, it's not in the model language that I can
Right.
Not just for Facebook.
No.
And that's, that's all I had. I had one other thing, but it's, it's more of a policy.
Just so the committee knows as well, the Department of Education has to approve any changes we make. So we went through, we made all the changes based on their model form, and now we bring it to you as the last stop. So any changes that we make here would have to go back to the department and then back to the committee. That's just their process for updating these plans.
So they review them, and then they determine if anything that you have included is
The gentleman who reviewed it was almost as thorough as Dinesh, cuz I think he sent it back to Jean and I.
You know what? Thank you.
At least. So we'll take a look at some of those issues.
Okay.
So, thank you.
And we're not stopped from making our standards
That's good.
And Dinesh, we're not, we're not stopped from making our standards in Norton higher than the state's. The state's is a minimal city.
Right. And I'm, I'm fine with that as well. I actually think it's a prudent policy to be honest with you. Just, some of the stuff was just literally wording and just a couple of, I don't know, not policy, but it just, that would give it a little more weight, a little more gravitas and something.
We'll ask the questions back to the, we'll ask them about how to best address the questions that you have.
So one, one last question. When it comes to filling out the forms, is that something that the person filling out the form has to put their name to, or is it anonymous?
Can be anonymous.
It can be either or.
It can be anonymous. It can be, matter of fact, a number of them in the last couple of years have come anonymously to our let's talk process, the let's talk on the district site.
How many do we get?
And that, definitely less than 10. I'd say probably even less than five in some cases, because, I mean, we've had very few determinations in the time that I've been here. But a lot of the issue comes down to, everybody has an interpretation of what's going to
It was the same.
It's that ongoing definition.
There's different concepts of that in this room. So the principal has to go through that process, or that doesn't mean, and make a conclusion, and have a rationale for their, for their conclusion. Most often, the, the idea that it happens often, that it's, it's a controlling relationship, if you will, the things that we are looking for, age is somewhat irrelevant.
And the important thing for us is to be sure, because we're following the process that we've set forth within our plan. So if a parent is not unhappy with the determination, they can go to the department. The department will really look at, did you follow the process that is laid out in your plan? And should you do that with fidelity?
Now, is there anything if, again, if we don't follow our written policy and DESI discovers that, what is the?
And you go, yes.
Yes, you do the risk.
Yes, and that can happen, to be quite honest, regularly. And then that's when we get investigated as a district, or asked about who's trained, how they're trained, why they're trained, how often they're trained, or asked things like this, you need to update your plan. We can have an appeal that goes to DESI, because they didn't like the determination. The parent has the rights to that hearing, that we have to provide DESI with the information that we utilize, and then DESI can make. Typically, it's the process, not the decision. They're not a court of law. But they can say, well, you didn't use this in your process, and that's why you came to maybe, maybe you would have come to a different determination.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
So it looks like it's 7:30. We will adjourn our meeting for tonight, and we will motion for
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You need to adjourn.